The special now, special town meeting will now come to order. Madam Clerk, has the warrant been properly posted as required by the Mass General laws and the Granby bylaws? Thank you. Please rise as Select Board Chairman Mr. Bale leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to call Mr. George Randall to come forward for an announcement, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, for the opportunity to speak to those here tonight. Good evening and welcome. I'm George Randall. I'm a member of the committee, working to help plan the 250th Sester Centennial Celebration of our Town Charter in 2018. I'm asking for your help not only to serve on the committees and plan the celebration, but specifically to assist me in the research and updating of the Town History Book from 1968 through the 2018 celebration. It's my intent to publish after the final event takes place. This would allow for inclusion of the photos of the entire celebration. Unfortunately, not much exists of the 1968 bicentennial events. A large private collection was discarded after the death of the celebrant, and a lot of the records were destroyed when Kellogg Hall was cleaned out. I don't want that to ever happen again. In the interim, I'm looking for old photographs of Granby. People, places, events, farming, anything that I can either pay to reproduce or scan to a disk or cloud media. Please take the time to look at your old family photo albums. Don't think a photo may not be important. Any photo will be considered, so let's talk on that sometime. A lot of you are wondering about the costs to do all of this. Working backwards a little bit, I approached the Board of Selectmen seeking funding for the book. I had gotten prices to print, which seemed reasonable to me, but turned out to be a lot of money. I'm extremely grateful to Lou Barry for his attention directly to this matter. Through his efforts, we will have the book printed at a local facility at an extremely reduced rate. Yes, I thought, I sought private funding from other groups, and my request was declined. I'm confident that through private donations and marketing directly related to the book, any cost to the town will be minimal at best, and perhaps will be self-funded. I will work diligently in that regard. We are looking for your help with the following subcommittees: Anniversary Book, Advertising and Marketing, Art, Celebration Ball, a Beard Contest, Entertainment, the Fair and Charter Day, perhaps a Pageant, Photography, Publicity, Slogan and Essay Contest, Sports and Events Planning, Finance Management and Budget Planning. Your ideas and suggestions are desperately needed. There is a lot to do before June of 2018. Any event or project will require time and solid planning. It may seem like 2018 is a long way off, but it will be here before we know it. So with that in mind, I'm asking for your help. Please get involved and make the Sester Centennial a huge success. We will make a similar presentation at the annual town meeting and other meetings along the way. In the interim, if you have any questions or wish to be involved, please contact Michelle Einturgen. Please see me after the meeting with any questions or comments. Thank you very much for allowing me these few minutes. I apologize to you all for taking time away from the purposeful meeting at hand. Thank you, Madam Moderator, for allowing these comments.
If you are voting tonight, you must be seated in one of the floor seats or in the bleachers. There are plenty of seats up front here, on the bleachers and in the floor, so please have a seat, otherwise your hand will not be counted. For those of you who are new to town meeting, up front are the Finance Board, the Select Board, the Town Administrator, Town Attorney, and Town Clerk. If you are a non-resident or a non-voter, you must sit in the designated area in the back of the gym. If you would like to comment or discuss the articles tonight as moved, please raise your hand, and I will recognize you. Wait for the mic to come to you and state your name and address. Any discussion or questions you have on the articles tonight must be directed to me and not to a member at town meeting. All questions and comments must pertain to the articles on the warrant. We keep the business of the town meeting to the subject matter on the warrant, because the warrant is what warns people of the contents of tonight's meeting. If you ask a question or make a comment that is outside the scope of the articles, I will declare it out of order, and it will not be answered in this forum. I will now recognize Mr. Barry to present the motion under Article One.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to authorize the Select Board to convey pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 40, Section 3, to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, acting by and through its Department of Conservation and Recreation, the following parcels held by the inhabitants of the town of Granby for the consideration of $2,590. First parcel is Sessors Map 11B, Parcel 12, 10 plus or minus acres, Book 1090, Page 400. Parcel 2, Sessors Map 11B, Parcel 13, 6 plus acres, Book 1262, Page 171. The next one's Sessors Map 11B, Parcel 14, 5 plus or minus acres, Book 1077, Page 75. Next parcel is Sessors Map 12A, Parcel 16, 18.24 acres, Book 10865, Page 65. Next parcel is Sessors Map 12A, Parcel 24, 5.29 acres, Book 1467, Page 1. And further, to authorize the Board, the Select Board pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 3 of the Mass General Laws, to convey to DCR the following: Describe parcels at such time and place upon such terms as the Select Board shall determine. Sessors Map 10C, Parcel 18, 10 plus or minus acres, deed reference to be determined. Sessors Map 12A, Parcel 28, 12.24 acres, Book 10257, Page 327. And Sessors Map 12A, Parcel 35, 15 plus or minus acres, deed reference to be determined.
Second, is there any discussion on the article as moved?
We've been making an effort to dispose of tax title property, property that was taken for taxes years ago, and has been on the books for years and years. A few years ago, we did sell some of these parcels at auction. These particular parcels are all located up in the Hoyok Range. They're surrounded by state property, so the only access is on foot. The state is making an effort to control the entire range or own all the property on the range, so this is a way for us to dispose of the property, get some tax revenue in return, or money in return from the state for it, and help the state preserve the Hoyok Range.
Any further questions or discussion? Back here in the bleachers? Can you, yeah, raise your hand so we can see you?
Name's Mike Pulzepack, 24 West Street. I just think that you're, you're selling this land very cheap, too cheap in fact. You're not even getting the timber or wood value off of it. I do recall that you did say that it could be landlocked land. I'm very familiar with this type of land, and I'm sure you could find some kind of access if someone wanted to spend some time. And I would just hold off. Back in 84, I believe it was, my family sold off what was called Rattlesnake Knob, which is right on the Amherst Granby, the worst land up there, and the state paid them $300 an acre. So I don't know why you're letting this go for 50 bucks an acre. It's ridiculous. That's it.
Thank you.
The amount is the amount that was owed to us by taxes. That's how they determine the figure. I've been told by the state that the value to anyone other than, for conservation purposes, negligible, because they don't allow any vehicular access across their property to get to it. So the only access is by foot. So that's what they tell me, and they're all landlocked by state property.
Further comments or discussion? In order for Article One to pass, it must pass by a majority vote. All those in favor of Article One as moved, please raise your cards. Thank you. Article One passes by a majority vote.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $34,208,975 for the new construction of an approximate 31,730 gross square foot addition and thorough renovation of the existing 37,030 gross square feet foot East Meadow Elementary School, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto for a combined pre-K through sixth grade school with approximate total gross square footage of 68,760 square feet. With all the new construction and renovation work to occur at the current East Meadow Elementary School site, located at 393 East State Street, Granby, Mass, which school facility shall have an anticipated useful life as an educational facility for the instruction of children for at least 50 years, said some to be expended under the direction of the School Building Committee, and to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow said some under Massachusetts General Law Chapter 44 or any other enabling authority. That the Massachusetts School Building Authority's MSBA grant is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. And any project cost the town encourages in excess of the grant, approved by and received from the MSBA, shall be the sole responsibility of the town, provided that any grant that the town of Granby may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of, one, 63, 63.63 percent of eligible approved costs as determined by the MSBA, or, two, the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, provided that any appropriation hereunder shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town to exempt the amounts required for the payment of interest in principal on said borrowing from the limitations on taxes imposed by Massachusetts General Law 59, Section 21(c), also known as Proposition Two and a Half, and that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed by the town of Granby and the MSBA.
Thank you. Second, discussion will begin with Mr. Bale.
Good evening. My name's Mark Bale, and for those of you who do not know me, I'm the Chair of the Select Board, as well as the School Building Committee. I'm not one to get very excited about things, but I have to say, I'm excited to be here Our committee has been working on this school building project for the last two and a half years. We have worked carefully to balance our town finances with the needs of our community and our students in the near and not-so-near future. Before I get down to specifics, I'd like to introduce you to our School Building Committee. Eight of us have had or have children in the school, Granby Schools. Three of us actually attended West Street and East Meadow. Five of us are currently educators, three of whom are administrators in the Granby Public Schools. First, our Vice Chair, Joe Rakowski, parent and active community member. Andrea Kennedy, parent and PTO Chair. Jim Morrissey, parent and architect whose work included in school building projects. Lynn Mercier, parent and town moderator. Jim Petrus, parent, retired East Meadow teacher and principal, school committee member. Emery Everin, parent, school committee chair. Judy Hul, interim superintendent of schools. Jennifer Frazier, Champagne, East Meadow School Principal. Deborah Barthollet, West Street School Principal. John Libera, parent and finance committee chair. Chris Martin, town administrator. Alan Minkus, project manager of Coggers International. And Christian Winset and Helen Fantini, architects from Jones and Witset Architects. There are two people that deserve special thanks tonight. Those are Lilian Kamis and Superintendent Judy Hul. Lilian Kamis takes meetings for all of our meetings, and completes them more quickly and thoroughly than any of us could. And interim superintendent Judy Hul has given our schools and this project the benefit of her extensive knowledge and experience. I also want to thank everyone else who helped in the various stages of the process, the town officials who attended our meetings, the school committee that has carefully deliberated on the project developments at every step of the way, my colleagues on the Select Board, and the Finance Committee. Working on a committee is at times dull, at times, and at times contentious, but most of all, it's hard work. Not the kind of work that makes your back ache or your feet sore, but the frustrating kind that leaves your mind tired and distracted. What these folks have accomplished has, in my opinion, been nothing short of spectacular. Please join me in thanking them for their hard work and commitment. Finally, on behalf of the town of Granby, I'd like to thank you. If you look around, you'll see friends, neighbors, fellow citizens. Tonight, you're not here as an audience, but as members of our town government. Tonight, it's your turn. Tonight, you are making decisions not only for yourself, but for our entire community, as well as generations yet to come. Regardless of your individual opinion, please remember that there are people here tonight who disagree with you. Respect them. They are your friends and neighbors, and they're entitled to their opinions. Too often, we forget that good people can disagree. Now, as you know by now, probably, the most proposed, the proposed project is to replace West Street School and renovate East Meadow. The new building in front of and attached to East Meadow will house pre-K through 2. The current East Meadow Library will become a music room and collaborative workspace, and the existing gym will be home to a new and updated library and media center. The new building will have a gymnasium, size for a middle school, and large enough for high school practices and GAA games. We reviewed seven options, from new construction at West Street or East Meadow to renovating West Street School. This last option was our first consideration. Was bringing West Street up to code a good idea? The cost for this option was an estimated 14 to 15 million dollars. These costs at West Street are driven by the need for a well and a septic system and the generally poor condition of the building. It's also important to note that these costs would not pay for state-mandated educational requirements associated with the MSBA. East Meadow offers a much better site. We will need to, we will need a new well, but the existing septic system has the capacity for the prospective addition. With East Meadow chosen as a site, the next question was whether to build a standalone building or one connected to a renovated East Meadow. Connecting a new building to East Meadow required the existing building to be completely brought up to code. However, the two buildings could share existing spaces and eliminate the need for a new cafeteria, also provide a larger and more adequate library and media room and a music room. Also helping to offset the cost of the renovation was a better reimbursement rate from the Costs have been and will continue to be paramount throughout the school building process. This summer, our architects did an admirable job of cutting costs while maintaining design that will lead to a building that we can all be proud of. When our financial subcommittee met a couple of weeks ago, we were working with 11.7% tax impact. Putting our heads together, we came up with a bonding strategy that lowered that impact to 9.6%. Last week, the Finance Committee called me to their meeting, it was 8:10, I was watching The X-Files, and asked me if I would consider supporting the, using stabilization funds. I will let them tell you tonight, they'll make an amendment to the original motion about using those stabilization funds and discuss the tax impact with you at that point. For now, here are the estimated costs. The total project cost, and I should note that these two costs, first, our project manager does the estimate, but then they're sent out to two different, other companies to peer evaluate. So when the numbers come back, we don't have just what our principal people want or have developed, but also what two of their peers have done independently. So once that comes back, all three things are kind of calibrated, and so the estimates are very good ones. Total project cost is an estimated 34.2 million. MSBA grant is 17.6 million, and Granby share would be 16.6 million. During the last school project, it became clear that people didn't always know how much they paid in taxes or how much their house was worth. For this reason, we have talked about the tax impact in three ways. The tax increase is estimated to be between $180 and $200 per $100,000 in housing value. If your house is valued at $250,000, which is about 20,000 more than the average house value in Granby, the tax impact is about $400 per year, or about $35 a month in taxes. And as, again, the Finance Committee will talk to you about the actual percentage tax impact. Now, as a high school debate coach, I'm accustomed to teaching my debaters to address opposing arguments before they come up, anticipating opposition to this question, however, it's been a little bit difficult for me. During the last school building project, this is what I got, anyway, bear with me. During the last school building project, it was said that the buildings don't teach children, teachers teach children. The idea was that we don't need a new building or renovation. We all know that buildings don't teach children, but neither do school administrators, cafeteria workers, or custodial staff. Try to run a school without them, and you'll find out it can't be done. Fact is, school buildings are relevant to education. If they weren't, we could buy a big tent and teach them in there. People have also brought up that the many building needs of our high school is a problem for this project. Fact is, the building problems at West Street won't go away because we have problems at Granby High School. It's no secret we've been losing kids to other public schools. It's not a secret that Exodus, that that exodus began with the defeat of the last school building project. Granby High School didn't change with the failure of that project, but people, I think, lost hope in the direction of our town. Tonight's vote is more than a matter of new buildings, it's an act of faith in our future. As many of you know, I teach high school in another town. This may be the reason I spend a lot of time thinking about younger generations in the world that we're leaving them. I have faith in the kids I deal with every day, and in the Granby kids I interact with occasionally. In spite of what you might see in the news, these kids are generally kinder and more caring than my generation. We have bequeathed to them a very divided, very troubled country and world. For their good as well as ours, we owe them schools that they can not only learn in, but be proud of, and that's what this project will do. Time will not stand still. To quote Bob Dylan, "Those who are not busy being born are busy dying." Sometimes it takes change to remain who we are. Without this project, without taking this step forward, the Granby we have known and loved will not be here for us, for our children, or the citizens who will make up this community when we're gone.
Mr. Libera will now speak to this motion.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm John Libera. I'm the Chairman of the Finance Committee, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Finance Committee tonight. We start by saying good evening. For those of you who are snow enthusiasts, I'm not with you. But let me get right to the point on behalf of the Granby Finance Committee. We recommend that you vote in favor of this proposal. Here are some of the reasons why we believe Granby should go ahead with this project. First, this is a great solution for bringing both West Street School and East Meadow School into a 21st century educational, operational, and technological environment. Putting the schools close together saves money, because many facilities can be shared. The schools don't need two libraries, two gyms, and so on. But there is also a hidden financial advantage to the project that comes from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, commonly referred to as the MSBA. The MSBA funding formula for handing out state funds for school building projects gives a smaller allowance per square foot for a renovation project than for a new building project, except when they're done together. So Granby is able to receive more funding for the renovation of East Meadow than it would if it were a separate project. Next, the Finance Committee has met with the architects and the project manager. We asked questions about the financial aspects of this project, and had conversations about the cost of various design alternatives. The Finance Committee believes that the design of the project that is before us tonight, including the combining of the two schools, has been given careful thought and a thorough vetting, with due consideration given to the financial needs of the town. Finally, the Finance Committee asked the question, what happens if this project doesn't take place? Well, the needs for improvements are not going away. Granby absolutely shouldn't risk allowing the financial partnership with the MSBA going away. If Granby rejects yet another project after having gone through the MSBA approval process, the MSBA will probably reject the consideration of any Granby project for many years. There would be a huge financial repercussions if Granby has to do a major school project without MSBA participation. I haven't talked about the cost to the taxpayer, because there is one change that the Finance Committee would like to see in the motion. We think the town ought to appropriate $2 million from stabilization funds to reduce the potential tax impact, the tax increase for taxpayers. When discussion starts on the motion, the Finance Committee intends to offer an amendment to the motion that will do that. In closing, I'll repeat, the Finance Committee recommends that you vote in favor of this proposal. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion, questions, or comments? Right here, please. Come to the front. Could you please stand so she could see you? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Karen Belanger. I live at 149 East Street. And, you know, I can appreciate that we need a new school, because I voted yes for the last school, okay? But you can't keep doing it on the backs of people willing to put money into their houses, okay? I put an addition on my mom's elderly, I'd like her to move in. The last two years, my taxes went up $1,500 a year, okay? I'm lucky, I can, I can swing that, I can afford it, I can get that through, but there's a lot of people who can't. For you to put any more money on the tax base of people, there's going to be the people who lose a partner. Now they're only living on one paycheck. There's already people scratching, as you know. Everything's going up, packaging, smaller prices are more expensive. You're going to be putting people out of their homes with this. You're also going to cause a detriment as far as the fact of, I live down on East Street. Within 200 yards of my house, there's five abandoned properties. Three of them actually run down decrepit in the state of falling-down disrepair. I have a hoarder house down the street, doesn't even have stairs on it, garbage all over the yard. Those properties are never going to get fixed if we keep increasing the tax base. Maybe we need a new school, but the people keep putting it on the backs of people willing to put money into their homes is wrong, because you're going to put a lot of people out of their homes. And it's just, it's just wrong. It's also, I mean, you drive down, coming into Ludlow, it looks like the Lower Ninth Ward, abandoned houses all overgrown. That's what people see when they come into town. That's not going to get any better. It's also, in the long run, going to hurt the town, because people are not going to be getting building permits from you. And that's a fact. My- My house is done, I don't need one. But I'll guarantee you, the people here, they're going to think twice before they say, "Jeez, I'm going to put a new kitchen in, guess I'll go to the town and get a permit." And we'll be back to where we were years ago, when they didn't have permits, and people just built, and the, and our joists were 36 inches apart, and things were falling down, and decks were falling off the house. And that's what will happen, because I guarantee you, there'll be a lot of people, they're not even going to be thinking about you folks. Building permits won't even be on the radar. So maybe you do need a school, but for it to keep going on the backs of the people willing to put money into their own house is wrong. Thank you.
Right here in the middle, please, could you stand so the microphone person can see you? Thank you.
Rich Damaraki, Bachelor Street. I'm going to be voting no on this article for a couple of different reasons. I'd like to talk about the actual tax effect of this project. The, most people got their tax bill, and they noticed that there was about a 3% increase in taxes for this year. And there'll be about a 3% increase next year for Proposition 2 1/2, and also for trash collection. The increase for this project will be around 10%. So if you take the average value of a house this year, 228,000, multiply it times the tax rate, $18.87, the tax is $4,300. If you take 13% of that amount for next year, the increase in taxes will be $560. So the average taxpayer in Granby will be paying $4,860. Now, that's the average tax. 50% of the people in this audience will be paying more than that amount. 50% will be paying less. And we have to keep in mind that there's going to be a, a, a major outlay of cash coming up. If this project passes, there's going to have to be funds used to demolish West Street School, and the school committee submitted a capital needs budget for the high school over a number of years of $3 million. So that's going to have to come out of our pockets, too. The next point is that they're saying West Street School is too old. There was an article in yesterday's newspaper, The Sunday Republican, about the city of Chigaby, that they're participating in an accelerated repair program with the state. They're going to be replacing windows and doors on a school which is 91 years old, okay? I attended that school, both, both school in Chigaby. And the important point they brought up, they said they didn't have enough money for a complete renovation. Okay? So West Street School is old, but it could be repaired. And we also have to keep in mind that the enrollment in Granby since 2010 has been steadily decreasing. And I think that the most cost-effective thing that we could do, I think there are two options. One is to repair West Street School, or two, close West Street School and purchase modular units and locate them at East Meadow. Now--
Hey, Rich, can we, we'd like to answer some of those questions, some of your comments.
All right. Um, I'm not sure how many people know that Chigaby has two new high schools, very nice high schools. I was in one about a week, what, a week or so ago? Chigaby is not Granby. Um, I know a lot of people here who grew up in Chigaby, but Chigaby is not Granby. And one of the reasons they're not Granby is, they're a city, and that they have, there's a funding formula for what we get for reimbursement from the state. If you were living in Long Meadow, where obviously they have a lot more money than we do, um, your reimbursement would be much lower. When they actually built, built or added on to their high school, the reimbursement rate is about 40%, as compared to our 63%. Um, and I'll need to talk about that reimbursement percent later, just so that's clear. Um, so, we're not Chigaby. Chigaby has the options, uh, because a lot, part of it is low-income people, they have a lot of options, they get more money from the state than we do. So that's one thing we should think about there. Um, in terms of modular classrooms, I don't know how many people know what that is, it's essentially a trailer. So, um, and I'm not sure that sending our kids to school in a trailer park would really be, um, either cost-effective-- --or desirable. Um, I, I lost track of some of Richard's questions. Um, so, actually, I'll just let him go.
Rich, do you want to finish your statements or comments?
Yes, I just have a, a couple of things. I think, one, a couple of things I didn't like about the School Building Committee is that, number one, I think the options, they, the school itself, to me, is too expensive. And one item just popped out right away, that they want to spend a quarter of a million dollars on air conditioning for the renovation at East Meadow School. That does not include the air conditioning in the proposed new school. And the other point is, in my opinion, the School Building Committee was not authorized to include East Meadow School in this project. When we proposed this, it was only to deal with what they should do at West Street School. So I think, actually, they exceeded their authority. Also, the, uh, I attended some of the meetings of the School Building Committee, and they decided not to allow any Granby residents to comment on anything they were discussing, which I thought was not correct, because I think they could have picked up some useful information from Granby residents as they were deciding what option to select. And just my, my last point, uh, it was interesting, I was reading Mass Live, and there was a comment, there were several comments about the project, but there was one that really struck my eye, and I'd just like, it's just very short. It says, "I teach in the Granby school system and know that the new building is oversized and unnecessary. The school committee wants to bring in more school choice students from nearby towns. Why should I pay for, for this for the next 30 years?"
Thank you. Will, will respond?
All right. Excuse me, thank you. Um, and just let me point out that, um, although we don't disagree, I, I have a lot of respect for the man who just spoke. He actually came to our meetings and listened carefully, and, um, did ask questions. Um, and he does that in town meeting, and it basically leads to us being more knowledgeable. So I just want to, even though I'm going to disagree right here, I want to respect the fact that he's actually helping us get more information out and clarify things. First of all, the cost of renovations. We looked at seven options, as I said in my speech. We looked at the renovation of East, uh, of West Street. Just to bring it up to code, was 14 to 15 million dollars, okay? This did not solve the issues that are involved with educational, um, that are involved with educational issues, like, uh, the state has standards for how, how big a room should be, um, where a room should be located, how much room's allocated to special education, that kind of stuff. Um, and we have students that go into school in a basement right now, which works most of the time, but, um, on occasion, it's gotten flooded. You could probably correct that for about 15 million dollars. For another million and a half, we get to renovate all of East Meadow School. We have one site, I don't know how many parents have had the experience of going from picking up kids at East Meadow, racing to West Street to pick up kids there, but this would have everybody, um, get picked up there, that'd be a major convenience. Another thing is that we don't need two principals for one school. So we would save on administrative costs. We wouldn't have custodians in two different places, so there'd be a lot of efficiencies, like, that would come through this. Needless to say, East Meadow would also be more, um, energy efficient. So, and when it comes to the renovations, I actually, at first I went for the, I wanted the cheapest project, whatever I thought we could get, um, past a town meeting. Um, the rest of the committee actually persuaded me that this was the most cost-effective way to do things. We also, if we were to build West Street by itself, we'd have to do a cafeteria. If we, um, connect it, um, and renovate East Meadow, we don't have to build an additional cafeteria. So there's fewer things that we have to build, we can take advantage of things that are already existing and save money. So, um, in terms of authorization, uh, the town does not authorize, um, the School Building Committee on what they can look into and not look into. That's done by the MSBA. They are, uh, authority, uh, they come under the Treasurer's Office at the state, and they kind of tell us what to do. They're the ones with the 17 million dollars that they're going to offer us that we can't really do much without. Um, so therefore, we kind of have to do what they want to do. They're not enthusiastic about us bringing things up to code and not give us the money necessary to bring things up to code. School teachers, um, I think, reading anything on Mass Live probably goes without saying. Anybody who puts things with no name on it, um, I wouldn't trust it. And finally, input, um, as we've had, we had one, at least one public outreach, we've had meetings, we talked with people who were available after. Um, anybody who's on Facebook knows that I've been answering questions nonstop for about a week. Marie McCord from the School Committee has also been on there, Jennifer Kern from the School Committee has also been on there. Um, so, we've basically done all we could to get the information out there that we thought people needed, so, and we're here for questions now, if anybody has them.
In the back, please.
Teri Johnson, Bachelor Street. I just have a, a question about money. The figures you're giving us, the figures you're giving us, um, did you include this project that Westover's doing? We have 40, in excess of 40 properties, uh, that Westover wants to buy. That's taken away from our tax base. Uh, is that going to have an effect on this 180 to 200 dollars per 100,000 that, um, we're going to be assessed? Was that taken into consideration, the loss of those 40 properties on the tax revenue?
We're checking.
Okay.
The ones that are sold are already off our tax rolls. Based on the construction, like, the size of the house and stuff like that, I mean, you can estimate how much those houses are worth. I don't think they're all going to go at once, in terms of like 40 things. Um, they do affect our tax rolls. However, when we did, you gotta go through the whole process of figuring out how much your property value's increased over the course of the years as part of the, figuring out the tax rate. Our tax, the size of our tax base has increased every year, so it's not going down, it may not increase as quickly, because those, um, houses are not, are coming off the rolls at the same time that, you know, some are getting added to, but, um, I don't know, it's the best I can really give you for an answer.
I have one other question, and that has to do with West Street School, and this has to do with the whole project. Um, we're building, we're going to vote to build, what, if anything, have you talked about to do with the old West Street School? Because that will cost. And has anything been put on the table with that?
Yeah, um, we can't make a decision that will, um, be guaranteed for, um, like, three or four years from now, um, because the, the board will be different, the comp makeup, the people who are on the board will be different. The board, what we believe is that if this project passes, we're going to appoint a, basically, a building committee to look at future uses of West Street School. Now, the future, I, one of the things I was adamant about when we went for the feasibility study was that we don't go into this thinking that West Street School is going to solve all our town office problems. Because 15 years ago, that was the thinking in town, was that, okay, we'll build some new schools, we'll put town, um, offices in there. That doesn't work right away. Uh, there's a few things we have to consider. If we change the use of the building, everything will probably have to be brought up to code, and Jim Morrissey can speak more about this if you have more questions. So, basically, there'd be a major amount of renovations. So if we can afford some of those renovations, um, such as, like, selling the Council on Aging Building if we're going to use that, um, as part of West Street, if that were going to be the case, then, you know, maybe we'd do that. But there really has to be some study. I don't want to tell people that we're going to be able to do something with East Meadow, or, I'm sorry, West Street, and that's a good reason to vote for the project, because it's really kind of up in the air at this point. In terms of scenarios, um, if somebody waves a magic wand, and for a dollar, we can renovate the whole thing, and everybody's happily ever after. Another scenario is, we can't do that, that's definitely the more probable. A third thing is that we, um, maybe we can close off the building, or parts of the building, and you, and bring up other parts up to date. This is stuff that we just really haven't gotten into at this point. Worst-case scenario, well, the next thing we would do is probably go out for a request, request for proposals, and see if anybody wants to rent or lease the building. And then finally, uh, worst-case scenario would be demolition. So those are like the possibilities for the building, but we're really not going to have an answer to that until we appoint a committee and kind of get down into the weeds and look at what exactly needs to be done, and what the minimum we can do is, and whether we can afford it.
There's a question up front, please.
Can I just end with a comment?
Quickly.
Okay. My big concern is here, we will have an expense of doing whatever to West Street, and I just don't, do not want to see another boarded-up building that the town owns and does nothing with. It's something you need to think about. It ha, you can't put it off to the next group. We've been doing that for years.
Thank you. Up front here, please. You can stand.
Hi. Lisa Petralia, Sixth Common Street. A couple of points, Madam Moderator.
Keep it the microphone up, because we can't hear.
Sure. The 17 million of the 34 million is a reimbursement rate more of 50%, not the 63.4. And, and I see the way the warrant and the MSBA is written, that they either can give you the maximum 63.4% for eligible allowances, costs, or, um, or some maximum grant amount. So I gather the 17 million is what they deemed reimbursable. Would the MSBA given any reimbursement for the West Street School renovation, even though it would only just bring it to code? That's one question.
Well, let's answer that first.
The answer is, very highly, probably not. They received that as an option from our submission of seven things, and they did not jump out at it.
Okay.
Um, would you like me to answer the, um, reimbursement thing, or do you want to--
No, I, I think it goes without saying. Um, the range of, right now, 180 to 200 dollars per 100,000 dollars of property valuation, does that include any of the hoped-for operational efficiencies by not needing two principals, two cafeterias, two gymnasiums? Okay. Would any of those future operational efficiencies be eligible to defray the cost to taxpayers for this project?
In terms, when it comes to defraying the cost, kind of almost everything's on the table. My guess is, based on the school budget, that the savings that they achieve will probably go into the school budget, because our school budget is not really keeping up with the school costs.
I see.
But there are other things in terms of, um, there are other things we're looking at that could conceivably, um, defray costs. I mean, that's kind of our biggest goal after getting--
I read, or I watched the January 28th, um, School Building Committee meeting, there was mention of going to the bond market, or finance market, and looking for 30-year bonds, and then I read something in the newspaper about 20-year bonds. Is the 9.6% that you're currently now looking at for financing costs indicative of the term of, of bonds?
Yeah, the 9.6 is, um, based on a 25-year bonding. We had discussed this at, um, finance, our subcommittee for the School Building Committee focused on finance. We figured out, um, that's when we started, we figured out, the first thing we figured out was that we could bond ahead of time, because when we originally planned this, we were counting on a 4.5 interest rate for bonds. Um, and that's really high right now, but we were planning on going at the end of, toward the end of the cycle. Now we're thinking that if we go to bond prior to that, um, we get today's interest rate, rate, which is down, I don't, I don't know exactly, but like, say, like, 2.8 to 3.2, is that, I think, is a fair thing? Um, so it's much lower, so we save a point on that. Um, and there are other things, again, that we're looking at, I think--
The stabilization fund issue.
Yeah.
Okay. And, and one last thing, can you comment on what the risks are to that range of 180 to 200, whether it's contingency events when you're building the project, or how you're able to ultimately bond the project?
Can I have the-- Can I have the, can I have the caution? That's it, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think I guess, I can barely see it. One thing, again, I should bring up is that although you see us here tonight, you know, talking about the project, the MSBA is, I don't want to call them a girl in the room, they might get mad at me, but they really call the shots. What we can do and can't do is based on what they decide. And in a way, this is good, because although we're all Granby taxpayers, we're also Massachusetts taxpayers. And MSBA is there basically to look out for our money, because some communities in the past have gone hog wild on their schools. There was a school, Newton North, that spent $200 million on their high school. That was, they put a stop to that. So what happens is the MSBA has very specific criteria and specific amounts to what they look for. Our project manager develops the cost, brings it to them, and everything goes through them and gets approved by people who do this for a living. Okay, so, so the reason why the, the contingencies are based in there, all right, I'm not going to find this stuff. Chris, you want to talk about the contingencies? I don't want to bore people with me trying to read this chart. They just want to know what the contingencies are. How much do we have for contingencies?
That phase of 180 to 200.
Oh, does that?
That's what she was asking.
John Libera, he's, I'm the non-numbers guy, so.
I'll be back here in just a couple minutes to make the amendment. But meanwhile, the question about the contingencies, built into the project costs that have been used for determining all of these kind of figures. There's, I think it's 1.9 to $2 million of contingency costs in the basic project. And then there's additional half a million contingency in terms of the figures that we've been using in town to talk about it, because there's always a cost of overruns beyond that. And so there's another, there's another half million dollars, 400,000, $450,000 that's built into the cost estimates based upon what the borrowing is that we tend to be done. So there's, there's built into there 2.4 million or so contingencies, and this is on a construction costs of, construction and associated costs of a little less than $32 million. The, the total cost that you see here, the figures that were added up also included the $800,000 that went into the, that went into the state, the feasibility study at the beginning of the project. And it's in there because MSBA will also reimburse us for a portion of that on the same basis that they do other things. So there's, there's a lot of contingency built in. And I'll, I'll speak more about that later on.
One last thing you brought up was the reimbursement. Again, the MSBA tells us what the article should look like. The reimbursement rate, they're very proud to say, is 63.63%. However, there is fine print. And the fine print is that some costs are not completely covered. So site costs are limited. So, and because we have to put in a well, for example, that costs us more than, that's, you know, we're limited on how much we can get back for that. Also, they only reimburse, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Alan, but 299, they were, reimburse us 63.63% of construction costs up to like $299 a square foot. And right now, construction costs are over that. So again, we cover the remainder. So they're very proud to say that they're, that's our reimbursement rate. In real terms, I think it's like 51.52. So when people think about, Chick could be getting like a 90% reimbursement rate, they're probably down at 70. And Long Meadow was probably paying 25, but.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm John Libera, again, representing the Finance Committee. I'm going to make an amendment to the motion that was on the floor. And when you hear, it's a, these are the longest motions, I think, that we ever get to see in, in town. So we got to sit through the whole thing again as I read it. But there are just two things that are changed in it. One is that the borrowing amount is reduced because of these stabilization funds. And there's mention in the motion of using money from stabilization funds. So other than that, bear with me. Thank you. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $34,208,975 for the new construction of an approximate 31,730 gross square foot addition and thorough renovation of the existing 37,030 gross square foot East Meadow Elementary School, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, for a combined pre-K through sixth grade school with an approximate total gross square footage of 68,760 feet, with all new construction renovation work to occur at the current East Meadow Elementary School site located at 393 East State Street, Granby, Mass. Which school facility shall have an anticipated useful life as an educational facility for the instruction of schoolchildren at least, for at least 50 years? Said sum to be expended under the direction of the School Building Committee. And to meet said appropriation, $1 million shall be transferred from the, from the Municipal Building Stabilization Fund, $1 million shall be transferred from the General Purpose Stabilization Fund, and the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow $32,208,975 under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, or any other enabling authority. That the Massachusetts School Building Authority MSBA grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. And any project costs the town incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town, provided that any grant that the Town of Granby may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of one, 63.63% of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA, or two, the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, provided that any appropriation hereunder shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town to exempt the amounts required for the payment of interest and principal on said borrowing from limitations on taxes imposed by Mass General Law, 59, Section 21(c), so-called Proposition Two and a Half, and that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the Town of Granby and the MSBA.
Is there a second for the amendment?
Second.
Can I have a motion to stop debate on the main article and to discuss the amendment? Can I have a second? So now, we will discuss the amendment which was just presented. We will not be discussing the main motion. Is there any discussion? Go ahead. Wait, can you wait for the mic, wait for the microphone?
Is this an amendment or just a replacement for the original motion? If we pass this, are we essentially passing the original motion with the additions?
Yes, it's, it's the addition of taking 2 million out of the stabilization fund.
So this is basically a replacement motion to the original motion.
Well, I'm amending the original motion by changing some.
But essentially, if we pass this, we pass the original motion.
No, if we pass this amendment, then we go back and discuss the motion as amended. So the original motion will be dead. If we do not pass this amendment, we go back to discussing the main motion without the amendment.
If it passes, if it passes, is it essentially the same motion?
If this motion as amended passes, it's, then we will start talking about the emotion as, the motion as amended, which is basically this amendment.
It still takes, it takes a 50% vote to pass this as the thing that we're going to talk about. It takes a two-thirds vote to pass the amendment.
So we have to pass the amendment by a majority vote. And then if an amendment passes, we go back to discussing the motion as amended and need a two-thirds majority vote to pass it.
Can I try and, hope my two cents didn't help in explaining this?
No, wait there.
So do you understand?
Yeah.
Do you hear anything versus?
Yeah, you've got to come through. Sure. Question in the back? Oliver, can you get this man in the back, please?
Just put the, that means.
Wait, can you, please wait for the microphone because we can't hear you.
Thomas Rucell, 140 Kyra Street. How much money is in the stabilization fund now? And if we take 2 million out, will that deplete it?
All right, hang on. Do people understand, can we just make sure that everybody understands the amendment?
I will answer that in just a minute, sir.
Before we answer your question, we just want to make sure people understand the procedure of what's going on.
I've sat at town meetings before where it took 45 minutes to figure out what we're voting on, because of an amendment. What the amendment does is it changes, if it's approved by town meeting, that's you, if you approve it, then the original motion, it adds that new amendment, that information on. I don't know if this will sound stupid or not, but I'm going to try it anyway. This is the school teacher in me. If the original motion is the color blue, okay, we vote on the amendment which is white. If town meeting approves that white, it gets mixed in with the blue and you vote on the light blue thing.
So now, we'll answer your question.
I'll answer your question, sir, as, as part of my general remarks on, on the purpose of the amendment. What this amendment does is basically talk about the financing of the project. Let me give you just a little bit of background. Years ago, when we started talking about this project, the idea of financing at its most conservative was that we would borrow money for 20 years. We wouldn't use any stabilization fund money. And whatever the tax rate increase was, that's what the tax rate increase was. Well, except that, after we got into the project and looked at what the costs were, that would probably have been a 12% tax increase. That's, that's silly. You know, towns don't pass 12% tax increases. You heard a next iteration of what was happening with funding discussions. As Mark said, decided to think about borrowing for 25 years. And also, between when we originally talked, talked about financing to what we're talking about now, the interest rates have gone down. 25-year financing is available to us at about a 3.25% interest rate. 30-year financing is available to us at about a 3.5% interest rate. But what this amendment does is for the tax rate is as follows. If we pass this amendment and take $2 million out of the stabilization funds and commit it to this project, and we switch from borrowing for 25 years to borrowing for 30 years, the total effect of that is that the tax rate increase will be about 7.6%. Not the 9.6% as in the original proposal, but 7.6%. Let me give you a few examples of what that means for homes. The average home in Granby, which they're about half of less valuation and half of more valuation, the average home is about $229,000. The current tax on that home is $4,304. This would raise it to $4,630, an increase of $326 a year for 30 years. On a half-million-dollar home, the current tax is $9,435. The tax would increase, under this 7.6% proposal, to $10,150 for a $715 a year increase in taxes. And with any individual mind, if anybody wants to ask a specific question, we can make a calculation as to what the taxes are now, what they'll be. But it's a 7.6% tax increase. The tax rate moves from $1887 per thousand to $20.30 per thousand on the valuation of the homes and lands. Now, the reason why, the reason why we think we should do this, there are three, I think, principal reasons. First of all, if you look back in the past years, since fiscal year 2002, does anybody have any idea how much we've spent on municipal buildings? We've spent over $9.5 million cash, cash, on municipal buildings. These are the highway building, the Council on Aging and a new town hall building, a new library, and a new public service complex, public safety complex. That's virtually everything except schools. We haven't built a school. This is the opportunity to build a school. And we think that, just in terms of the fact that the schools are the most valuable real estate that we have in town, that this deserves the consideration of throwing in a mere $2 million from the stabilization funds into this project to reduce the tax burden on taxpayers. Now, sir, this will answer your question, I think. Right now, we have over $5.5 million in the stabilization funds. All right? $5.5 million. But because in past years, we have borrowed money for things like highway equipment and so on, we have not a commitment, because you cannot commit a future town meeting to any sort of expenditures. But we have basically sort of a moral commitment for about $1 million of that $5.5 million that's to go for things which we borrowed and in past said we would take the money out of stabilization fund to pay for. So there's about $1 million to take away from there. There's a thought that besides the $2.5 million, $2.4 million contingency that's built into this project, that what if we ran into another $1 million of unexpected problems? We don't know what that would be. We don't know what the problems would be for $2.4 million. But suppose we did. Well, there might be another $1 million that you want to set aside. We look at the West Street School project, which was mentioned, and said, well, what are we going to do with that? Well, we don't know. Nobody knows yet. That's not even been, not even been brought up to a committee yet. As Mark said, a committee would be appointed after we decide to build a school to determine what happens with West Street School. But just for safety sake, let's say we were thinking we maybe should set aside a half million dollars, in theory, to allow for what might happen there, including raising the school if it's necessary. Well, that leaves over $1 million left in the stabilization funds. Now, let me give you a perspective on $1 million. $1 million is 5% of what our total budget is for everything, for the town and the school side of the budget. There are rules of thumb, which I hear about going to meetings where there are people, finance committees, that in cities and towns, the cities and towns our size, that you ought to be spending, or think about spending, between 3% and 5% of your budget a year on capital items. Well, we've been doing that, sort of, except that we haven't had to think about actually paying for it. We've taken it out of stabilization fund monies in the past. Hence, for example, by saying that there's a commitment, a forward commitment of about $1 million to pay for things that we, in fact, have borrowed and bought in the past. So what is going to happen to Granby sooner or later, sooner or later, is that we're going to reach a point where the stabilization funds, unless they're replenished, would not continue to enable us to do that on a yearly basis, even though we should be doing it. So Granby is going to have to rethink either what they're spending in other areas or what the tax rate is or something in order to come up with that kind of money to keep the town operating the same way it's been operating. What this does is it accelerates that by a couple of years. Taking $2 million out, we're going to reach that point two years sooner than we would have. But it's not something that's going to happen only if we do this. It's going to happen no matter what. So what this does, though, is say that, look, we've got these schools here. They're important to us. This is a key project for us. Let's take some of the current burden off taxpayers and reduce that bill by the $2 million. Finally, let me say this. As I mentioned before, when you look at sort of the most conservative approach towards financing this thing, you'd want to borrow for 20 years. You borrow for 20 years, you pay back the fewest dollars overall. I mean, there's no, no question about that. But as I said, if you want to raise taxes by 12%, you're facing not just an uphill battle, I think you're facing an impossibility. We don't want to do that. So successive thinking about how to finance this has led the Finance Committee to think about this question. If you're in favor of this school building, and no matter what you yourself think about your own personal financial situation, whether you can afford a 12%, a 10%, a 9.6% increase in taxes, what you have to think about is this. We're a community. There are a lot of people in the room. There are, what, 500, 600 people in the room here tonight, perhaps? 400, 400 people in the room? There takes a two-thirds vote of the people in this room tonight in order to pass this proposition. And then it's going to take 50% at the ballot box. Think to yourself, how are you going to best present this project to the total sum of policy, of... policy, of taxpayers in town? And we think that the way to do that is to get this current tax rate increase down as low as possible. And that's what this tries to do. It tries to make this as low as possible so that if it influences your vote to say, well, look, this is something that we can do. This is something we can afford, this 7.8%, we can do that. And if you're thinking about your neighbors who aren't here tonight but are going to come to a ballot box to vote, it's going to have the same kind of considerations. We're not asking for a near 10% increase in taxes. We're asking for the 7.6, 7.7 increase in taxes. And I think that may make a big, big difference, both in the way you think about it, and the way you might talk to your neighbors about they, about how they think about it. And that was really one of the major considerations, this is why the finance committee is making this recommendation. I'll be available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Is there any more questions or discussion on the amendment? Mr. Tac up front here? No. Up front? It's coming.
Okay, on the amendment, as far as taking money out of stabilization funds, I probably would not agree with that because, as the selectmen know, the finance committee know, those of us on capital improvement know, there's over $3 million worth of requests for this building in the next three years on capital improvement right now. So where are you going to get that money? As it comes up, the roof on this building has to be done. It's been leaking. We either got to do the roof, or we got to buy more buckets. So the second thing is, the latest EPA mandates are mandating all fuel tanks be out of the ground by the end of 2017, which means you're going to have to take the fuel tanks out of these schools, whether you like it or not. If you're lucky, you won't find contamination. So I feel you better have to finance your job, save your stabilization fund, because you're going to have to finance these other little projects. One of them's the roof, one of them's the air handler, the furnace, they got science labs that are non-functional, and they want work in the gym. So you'll be looking for money to be in the stabilization fund, or you're going to be out borrowing money to do these jobs. So it's six to one, half a dozen of the other. It's never wise to spend yourself into a quandary, I don't think.
Thank you. We'll address that.
Wayne, thank you for the comments. They were perfect examples of the kind of thing that I was talking about, that we're going, as we go through the years, we're going to face things that are unexpected and things that are expected, as the things we know in advance. But the point is, is that the kinds of expenditures that Wayne's talking about are the expenditures that a town has to expect to run into every once in a while. Right now, we have no way with our ongoing revenue stream and the ongoing expenses that we have to deal with that, and we've been able to have the luxury of taking it out of the savings account, with no thought of replenishing the savings account. So I said so that thinking in that way means that eventually this money is going to disappear. This accelerates it, I think, by a couple of years where we reach that point. But we still reach the same point where we have to ask ourselves, are we going to do this? Do we want to do this? Are we willing to pay for it? If the answer is we're not willing to pay for it by any increase in taxes, then the town has to find another way to pay for it. It doesn't stop the need for it, and it's not going to stop the need to continue to replace money. Thank you.
Superintendent Hu will talk to that issue also.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Just to be clear about the capital plan, which has not gone to the capital planning committee, they have chosen to hold off until the votes are done on this project. What we're looking at is a six-year plan, not a three-year plan, but a six-year plan that is approximately $3 million, but is not just for this facility. There's about $150,000 worth of work that we had put in for both West Street School and East Meadow that would come off the table as we move forward. So we would be looking at something that's probably a little less than $3 million over the course of six years to do some work that's needed here at the high school. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Further comments? Way in the back to the right? To my right? Here comes the microphone.
I live in Doyle. Oops, excuse me. I live on Bachelor Street. I'm listening to all this, and I'm very impressed that you want a nice new school for the children, and they deserve it, I'm sure. But my concern is, this school, how old is it? Maybe 50, 60 years, correct? The one that they're going to replace? Why is it in such bad shape? If you have millions of dollars in the coffers to maintain it properly, it should last a heck of a lot longer. There are a lot of buildings in this country that are hundreds of years old, and they're doing fine. Why is there water in West Street basement? Why wasn't that taken care of? Then you end up with mold, and the children are exposed to that, and you end up with illnesses. I don't get it. Where is the maintenance done on some of these? Why isn't this roof repaired? That's where I thought our taxes went. I don't begrudge the children a brand-new building, but it seems to me that these things should have been taken care of. And I would like to see something in the amendment about proper maintenance being done every year to go through the buildings and find out if something needs repair, and fix it, and fix it right away, actually, if something needs a repair.
If you would like to make an amendment to the amendment, that is your option. It must be brought to me in writing, and we can then discuss that. But the amendment also has to be concerning West Street School and East Meadow School, because that is what this town meeting is about tonight. So if you wish to amend the amendment, it needs to pertain to the motion at hand.
No, I'm not mending anything. I just would like to make sure that things are maintained properly. If you're going to spend all that money, take care of it, so you don't end up like this.
Thank you. Rich, back here. And then Joe, you can speak.
I'd just like to get both sides of the story out, and I'm a little bit disappointed in the finance committee, because the $2 million is like a teaser. And what most people think, there's a savings account over there with $2 million in it, and we could take that money and offset the cost of the school. It's going to reduce our taxes, but it really doesn't, because I'll give you a simple example. Let's say we have $50,000 in the stabilization fund. We take that $50,000, give it to the school project. Now, there's no money in there. The police department comes, and they say they need two cruisers for $50,000, and there's no money in there. So you have to raise taxes to pay for those two cruisers. So John says the rate is 7%. It's not 7%, it's 10%. They're only deferring 3% of that tax increase to a later date, which you and I will pay. So don't get confused that, that rate originally was around 13%. Then it went down to 10%. Now it's down to 7%. So don't be misled. The other point is that the, I lost my train of thought there.
Well, we can answer that point, your first point, if you give up the microphone. Thank you.
Okay, I did remember that last point.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. You gave me a second. That I talked to the treasurer in South Hadley, and the school they just built, they're financing that over 20 years, and they said that's standard for the industry. And I also went to the meeting where the town's bond agent also said that generally, these projects are financed over 20 years, some over 25, and it's rare that it's over 30. So again, if this project was financed over the normal 20 years instead of 25, I'd like to ask John, how much additional interest is that costing us just to get that rate down so that this project will pass? I mean, that's what, that's what it boils down to.
Thank you for those questions. Rich, I think you are partially correct and partially a little bit off base. First of all, one of the points you made was exactly one of the points that I think I made in the presentation, that the idea that a town might have 3% to 5% of its expenditures every year for certain capital kind of expenditures and certain unexpected sort of issues that pop up, means that if you are taking money out of stabilization fund instead of taking it out of your tax base, then eventually your stabilization fund runs out, and what do you do then? Then you have to think of a different way to go about doing that. That's what Rich says. What if you lose all the money in the stabilization fund? What do you do for the next piece? That's what I said. And it's not a question of if that's going to happen, it's a question of when it's going to happen, under our current operational procedures. So what I said then was that the $2 million hastens that prospect. We've got $5.5 million in there now, we take out two, we're not going to have $5.5 million. So that $2 million comes out sooner than it otherwise would have, but it's going to come out eventually, and we're going to have to then sit down and do the hard work of figuring out how you run the town, either on the tax base that we currently have, or on the, on the services that we want from the, from the town. Now, that's for the basic piece. The piece about the hidden, about a hidden tax that eventually you're going to have to spend a lot more, what'd you say, 10%, 10%, whatever the figure was, that's, the part's incorrect, because what that does is that says you want to build the stabilization fund back up to $5.5, $8 million level, what it was. We don't need that. We don't need that. What we need is about a million-dollar cushion there, and then an operating and taxing procedure that allows us to fund every year this 3% to 5% of the budget for the capital needs. But we don't need to raise a bigger stabilization, stabilization fund amount of money. Thank you.
Joe Rakowski, I'm actually speaking as a resident, not a member of the school building committee. I'm looking at the time. I think I'd like to make a motion to move forward on the amendment that Mr. Libera has suggested using $2 million in stabilization. And again, in the interest of time, we're then going to be focused on the actual major thing that we're here tonight. So I think it's the right thing to do. I think we need to move the motion.
So in order to vote on the amendment, we need a 2/3 majority to pass it. I'm sorry. In order to move the question, I need 2/3 of town meeting to agree that it's time to move the question, which is the amendment. So if you want to vote on the amendment now, if the town meeting feels they've heard enough about the amendment, please raise your cards. Thank you. For those of you who wish to have more information on the amendment, please raise your cards. The motion to move the question passes unanimously. So that puts to vote now the amendment, which must pass by a majority if you'd like the motion to be changed, the main motion. So all those in favor of the motion, of the amendment, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The amendment passes by a majority. So now we will go back to discussing the main motion as amended. So now we are discussing the motion as amended. Is there further discussion on that motion? In the back, please, with the purple on, can you stand so the microphone? Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Bartos. I live on 97 Porter Street. In the interest of time, I just like, would like to make a final comment and also an impassioned plea. If this vote does not pass, and for those of you voting against it, what is your plan? Do you want to see this town become a ghost town? People with young families, the future of Granby, they're leaving, they're threatening to leave, or they're sending their children to other schools. How will we combat this in the future without the allure of a new school to keep residents in town, or to get new people to move into those empty houses we've been hearing about? We have to start somewhere, and this is our opportunity. It's our chance. We, as a town, have let so many things go and just fall to ruin. Our town hall, Kellogg Hall, is this your plan, to let the schools fall into even more of a state of ruin? Please, let's take this chance. Let's move forward. Let's start with this and to begin turning Granby around and become a part of the 21st century. Please, I would like to make a motion that we vote on this amendment, on this motion.
You cannot speak to the amendment and make a motion to move the question in the same request, so I can't allow that at this point. In the back, please, in pink.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Moderator. I would like to speak in favor of this tonight. I have lived here since 2004. My husband and I moved to Granby because, in part, of the school systems. I have two children in second and sixth grade. They're actually not in the schools right now due to personal choices, but I still support this because of a word that I've heard so many times tonight, and that's community. Granby is a community, and whether you like it or not, we need a school. If we don't have a school, where are our children going to go? Who are they going to associate with? What are they going to learn? Where are they going to play? Where are they going to be after school on Friday nights and Saturdays? I work in corrections, and I can tell you right now, children who don't have a place to go and play and learn, safe, a school building like this with teachers who care, with custodians who care, with principals who care, they come and see me, and that's not what we want for Granby. That's not what we want for our kids. That's not what we want for 50 years down the line. This is more than a school. It's sports, it's music, it's art. It's where we have our town meeting. It's where we vote. It's an emergency shelter. We need it. We need a good one. We need one that's safe, one that works, that when we turn the heat on, the heat comes on, that has air conditioning in the summer so that children are not sitting at their desks with their heads down and the fans on, and they can't learn. I have seen that at West Street. I volunteered there for three years. We can't use that building, we can't fix it. We need something new. We've let this chance pass us by. We've heard tonight about choices that we've made, and the time is now. If we don't make a choice, who's going to? Our grandchildren? Where is the money going to come from? What kind of school are we going to have for them? So I would ask you, please, if you're on the fence tonight, think, yes, it's a lot of money, yes, it's a big commitment, but what is our community if not a commitment worth our money and our time?
So unless somebody has something other to say than what they've heard tonight, I will move the question. Is there anything else that should be said that somebody feels hasn't been said? Right here? Microphone's coming.
Hi, Len Halflich, Nine Philip Circle.
Hi, Len Haflich, Nine Phillips Circle. Question I have is, is the state fixed at the amount that it's going to give us? Or if this goes to vote and passes, it's still renegotiable? It is not. Does the state reward for academic achievement? It seems to me like, no, they don't. I answered that question. Another thing that happened to me in a town that I was in previously was, I went through the same thing about schools and everything, and it came and it passed. And a year later, we were ambushed with new tax reassessments of our properties, which then raised it another considerable amount. How often is the town allowed to reassess properties? Is that a fixed timeframe?
Mr. Leonard, will you stand up and answer that question as an assessor?
Hi, I'm Greg Leonard. I'm on the Board of Assessors. Been on the board for about 15 years. The state requires us to revalue property every six years. So we visit every piece of property to reflect and be accurate on the market value of your properties. We're required by the state to do that.
Thank you.
We don't do all 3,100 pieces of property in one year. We divide the entire load of 3,100 pieces of property to every six years. And we've got a revalue year coming up, which is irregardless of what the economy is doing. The state requires us to do this.
Hi, this is John Libera again from the Finance Committee. I've come up here because in my role, I think, as chairman of the Finance, just as a member of the Finance Committee, I get asked basically that question quite frequently. Someone will come up to me and say, hey, my taxes went up by 5% last year. Our people will say, gee, my taxes dropped by 1%. What happened? And it has to do with actually Proposition 2.5. We collect about $10 million in property taxes in Granby a year. It's more, it's a little closer to 11. But let's just use $10 million as an example. That $10 million is what we can collect this year total from everybody in town that's currently here in town. Next year, under Proposition 2.5, the most that we can collect in taxes from the entire town is $10 million plus 2.5% of $10 million. That's all that we can collect. That's for the town as a whole. Where the misunderstanding comes in is that how you collect that taxes and who you collect it from, that's where the valuation of the properties come in. Properties are evaluated every so often, as Greg explained. And if everybody's property value went up by the same percentage or down by the same percentage every year, then the amount of taxes that you pay wouldn't change as your percentage of that total. But what happens is that because of maybe perhaps the section of town you live in, improvements to the property, differences in how certain kinds of houses are treated on the market versus other kinds of houses, there will be a differential between how one set of houses is evaluated and how another set of houses is evaluated. It doesn't make any difference for the total valuation of the town or for the total taxes collected in town, but it does affect your piece of it individually. So it has nothing to do with the town trying to get more money from you as an individual or town trying to get less money from you as an individual. The town only looks at the total gross amount of what it takes and what is allowed to collect. I hope that helps a little bit. It's a complicated subject, but I'd be happy to talk to anybody who wants some written examples. Thank you.
So it has been almost two hours. If you have a comment that hasn't been talked about tonight, I will entertain it. Otherwise, we'll be ready to vote. You, sir, have something that has not been said yet? Okay?
Mary's looking at me. She's in trouble. My name is Jay Joyce. I'm at 18 Jennifer Drive. I don't think there's anybody here that doesn't think that the Granby students deserve a quality education. I think we all are agreement on that. The problem is money. Since 2010 to 2016, the Granby property taxes have gone up 23.5%. This year, right now, you can use your number of 7.6, 9.6, whatever you want for the school project, but we know when we get to the June town meeting, they're going to add on to that. Proposition 2.5, you're going to get 2.5 more. That being said, we're looking at a substantial property tax increase. What happens is to buy the majority of the people. But I just want everybody to know, I went on the Internet today, and I checked Chickopee, Ludlow, Belchertown, South Hadley, Hadley, and Amherst. Granby has the highest property tax than any other town surrounding us. And all those towns have more services than we do. So somebody has to ask the question, we're paying all this money in, how are these other towns doing better than us? I agree entirely.
Excuse me. Do not yell out, please, and let the people answer who are able to answer that question. I know you know the answer, but please do not shout out at each other.
I understand what everybody's saying. My question comes down to, why can't we use the lessons learned in those communities and bring that into Granby so everything doesn't end up in the residential property taxes?
I'd like to address the question of the increase in property taxes. Over what period of time did you say, sir?
It was 2010 through 2016. And I got all the numbers here if you want.
As I said before, what Granby is allowed to do, and let's say what the town is allowed to do without any vote by the taxpayers, is to raise taxes by 2.5% every year on the property that's there. And then if new construction comes in, then they get assessed whatever the value is. So that is all that has been raised, and you can't raise more than that because you've got to go to the state, and the state checks all your figures. It's impossible to raise it by more than that by just the actions of the town administrator and select board. What you can do, however, is you can vote yourself an increase in taxes. That's what we're being asked to do tonight. We're asked to vote ourselves a temporary, 30-year temporary, but a temporary increase in property taxes to pay for the new building. A few years ago, the biggest increase in our taxes came because we voted to pay for townwide trash collection. Remember that? We used to go take our stuff to the dump, throw it in there. Worked out great. We were basically in business with the dump. They sent us money on back. We put it all into the stabilization fund. We were all happy, and it was a great way to operate when you could operate that way. But when the landfill closed, we then had that question of, what do we do now? And I remember what the Finance Committee said at the time, said that if every house in town had to go and sign an individual contract with a waste management company to come and pick up their trash, it was going to cost every house about $200 to $300 a year. So what we did was we voted as a tax increase, an amount that could cover for the entire town, the trash pickup by the company that we went with. For the town as a whole, it was a fantastic deal. Fantastic deal. And it's actually cost us less to operate that than what we originally expected. So that's where the tax increase came. We voted it for ourselves. The part that we didn't vote, the 2.5%, it can't go up any more than that. The state is overlooking everything that you do and has to approve all those figures. Thank you very much.
Well, I just want to add one thing concerning the school. The school department in Granby is the largest consumer of energy that the largest bill. In the planning of the new school, has anything been done about renewable energy so we don't have the biggest bill? That was the second part, and I didn't want to mix them up.
All right. Please hand the microphone over to the mic runner.
I think everybody's getting ready to vote here, but I'll answer your question. There's something called LEED, L-E-E-D, which is Energy Efficiency Rating. The part of our reimbursement rate, that 63.63%, two points of that or so are attributed to energy-efficient planning and construction. So it's factored right in there, and the state rewards us for it.
Are we ready to vote? In order for Article II as amended, as moved, to pass, it must pass by a 2/3 majority. I'm going to ask the counters to please stand and go to their stations for counting. All those in favor of Article II as amended, as moved, I ask you to stand and hold your card up, please. Stay standing, please, until I tell you to sit. Everybody who has left standing can now sit. All those who are opposed to Article II as amended, as moved, please stand and raise your cards and remain standing until I tell you to sit, please. Everyone done? You can sit now, thank you. So the vote is 387 yes. Please, can I have some order? The meeting hasn't dissolved yet. We have 387 yes to 35 no, which means the article as amended, as moved, passes by a 2/3 majority. That being said, it'll now be on the ballot for March 8th. March 1st, sorry, March 1st. Thank you. The meeting is now dissolved.